I have it as seven o'clock. And there's Kevin right there, perfect. Kevin, welcome. So. I have it at seven o'clock. Uh, it looks like all members of the planning board are present, so I'd like to call this. Meeting for the October eighth twenty twenty four meeting of the Wakefield Planning Board to order, so. Uh, first off, I will take attendance, so in order of who appears on my screen, Theo Noel. Bill Spalding.
Here.
Matt Lowry.
Here.
Kevin York.
Here.
And myself, so all members are present. Item number two on the agenda is the approval of the September twenty fourth twenty twenty four. Meeting minutes, uh, does any member of the planning board have any comments related to the meetings as presented? Uh, seeing none, did anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Minutes. Oh, motion by Matt to approve meeting minutes and second by Theo. Uh, so Bill Spalding.
I'm staying.
Uh, Kevin York.
Yes.
And Matt Lowry.
Yes.
And Theo Noel.
Yes.
Okay, so the uh, meeting minutes are approved. The third order of business uh, would be the three fourteen A and R. Um, so what I'd like to do if everyone else is okay, just because it's going so quick, I'd like to do the three fourteen Salem Street. A and R, and then I'd like to switch item number eight related to the multifamily zoning. Up to after that A and R, in case any members of the public who have an interest in that are uh, attend. So with that being said, um, I believe Mister uh, Brodigan. Is the uh, representing the applicant related to the A and R?
Good evening, Mister Hogan, members of the board. My name is Joe Brodigan, and I represent the applicant. As well with me is Michael Touche, you can't see him, he's to my right side, and also Stephen. Uh, Mezalek uh, from uh, Machandran Associates is present as well. He's the person who drew the A and R plan.
And before we, before we uh, uh, proceed, uh, do other members of the board, has everyone, can everyone give uh? Or tell, indicate if you have not received said A and R plan, I think Sam issued them uh, via email uh, approximately a week ago. Nope, uh, so if that case, uh, if everyone's received it, uh, Mister Brodigan, do you want to uh? Hold the plans up potentially and uh, and I know we reviewed it the last meeting, but maybe just do a quick overview in case anyone. Is calling in who may not be aware of the uh, A and R.
Absolutely, could I have uh, Stephen uh, Mezalek uh, pull it up? Please.
Joe, do you have it available? I, I, I don't, um, I, I, I don't have the, you know, I can't pull it up on my screen.
Just give me a second here, let me see what I can do. Do you have Michael your email?
In that case, I have a copy of it and I uh, started to share if uh, people can see it.
I appreciate that, Mister Chairman.
So do you want to just give us a, a quick overview as relates to uh, the A and R and what the intent of this is? And then we can take any comments from other members of the board if any.
Absolutely, so uh, this is for the property three fourteen, three thirty six and three thirty Salem Street. My client uh, bought the property uh, back in Ju- on July twenty sixth of two thousand uh, twenty four. Uh, it, the A and R plan uh, shows the property being uh, subdivided. Uh, or being divided into three lots, a lot eleven, twelve and thirteen, uh, lot eleven. Um, uh, in, in this property, uh, all, all three properties are subject to six different uh, permits. Uh, that were granted uh, by the ZBA, uh, and uh, those permits uh, were uh. Uh, to uh, allowed my client on lot eleven uh, to uh, and, and just to go back. Uh, my client was not the applicant uh, for the original permits, um, he bought the property after. Uh, the applicant uh, who was a prospective purchaser was unable to complete the purchase. Uh, and my client bought it uh, from the seller, the, all of these permits, uh, variances, uh, all. Uh, contain the clause that they um, run with the land and any subsequent owner uh, has the right to um. And exercise uh, all the rights uh, uh, conditions in um, and, and terms uh, of those permits, so. These are, these are uh, the, these permits are things that my client inherited when he became the owner of the property uh, back in July two thousand twenty four. Uh, the three lots, uh, lot eleven, um, the permits allow the construction of a nineteen unit. Um, apartment building of which uh, ten of those units are gonna be two uh, bedrooms, nine are gonna be single. Uh, uh, one uh, bed, one uh, bedroom units. Uh, there are affordability restrictions uh, on uh, three of the units, two of the uh, uh, single, uh, the, the single uh, bedroom. Uh, units and one on the uh, uh, the two bedroom units. Uh, lot twelve, um, is gonna be a new sing- single family uh, residence. Uh, and lot thirteen uh, is uh, there's an existing dwelling uh, that's on there now. Uh, that is going to be uh, is, is gonna be kept, so the uh, this A and R plan. Um, is filed uh, pursuant uh, to chapter uh, forty one, uh, section eighty one uh, P. Uh, I believe it complies with all the terms and requirements uh, for an A and R plan. Uh, as the board is well aware, uh, the only dimension that is uh, pertinent uh, for an A and R plan is whether or not there's sufficient frontage. All three lots have sufficient frontage uh, as found um, by uh, the ZBA uh, in some of the decisions. Uh, that they entered into uh, in the uh, plan, there's a uh, proposed lots summary that shows the frontage of each of the lots. I could see lot eleven is directly uh, pertinent, uh, right, right on uh, um, to right on Salem Street. And that has a hundred and forty two uh, feet of frontage, uh, lot twelve has um, uh. Uh, forty point fifty, uh, uh, forty and a half feet of frontage, and lot three, it has the same amount of frontage, it's up top. Uh, uh, here in this little triangle area, that being the only requirement uh, uh, for uh, the A and R plan. Uh, we asked the board uh, to uh, sign it and endorse it, uh, this plan was done by Machandran Associates and uh. In particular, Stephen uh, Mezalek, uh, who's present, he can answer any questions he has. We were in front of you last month. Uh, and there were some issues with the plan, we believe all those issues uh, have been cleaned up and uh. Mister Mezalek can ex- explain uh, any questions you have about any of these uh, dimensions or any other, uh, the criteria that's set forth in the plan. Uh, so we respectfully ask um, that uh, uh, that you, under the statute, endorse the A and R plan.
Thank you, and before I open it to the planning board, I want to remind any members of the public who may not have been at our last meeting. Um, who are not familiar, but the, this is an approval not required process, which as. Uh, Mister Brodigan mentioned is a process established by Mass General Law, chapter forty, section, uh, chapter forty one. That is, consists of a streamlined procedure for certain types of specific subdivisions of lands into separate lots. In lieu of going through a full subdivision review process, so long as the applicant can demonstrate that they have met some specific legal requirements. Around frontage, adequacy of way that the property abuts. And that the access to the lots are apple, or are um. Are adequate, the board is required by statute to endorse it. This is only providing that the land will be transformed into three separate lots from the current. Land ownership ever, as currently today. It does not constitute the issuance of a building permit or any other uh, discretionary permits. It sounds as if in this case, some of those had, those processes may have already been run through, but that's not the purposes of what we're talking about today. We're talking about the division of the current land into the three separate lots that's contemplated on the plan that's being presented. This is not a discretionary process. Um, with that being said, I'll open it up to other members of the planning board if they have any comments or questions to other applicants.
I, I have one Jim, I just also wanna point out, it's not just. If the plan meets specific frontage requirements, but also that it complies with the. Rules and regulations that this board has established, so, which is why um, previously this plan was. Was not endorsed because it did not do that, so. I, I just wanna make it clear that just because they meet certain. Uh, dimensional and frontage requirements does not entitle them for an endorsement, they also need to follow the rules and regulations, so. Do you believe that the plan uh, follows all the rules and regulations now?
Uh, yes, we do, and Mister, and, and Steve can, can speak to that.
Yes, I believe it does.
Okay. And I actually, I've looked through it, um. It's, it's a little more, a little unorthodox, what has, has, how this has been done, but it does meet the. Um, our rules and regulations, so I, at this point, I believe it does. Qualify for an endorsement by this board. Um, I, I do have one question though, I did not go through and read all of the Board of Appeals decisions. Um, did any of those? Um, directly. Um, applied to the previous plan that the board has endorsed out there? Or is it just generic? I don't know what those, I didn't read through each of those decisions, so I'm not sure. Uh, this is, again, it's a little unorthodox where we've already endorsed a plan for the site. And we're having something that is almost the exact same come before us, so I, I just wanna make sure that um. Those decisions don't directly relate or uh, apply to the previous plan that's been endorsed.
So, um, I, I believe each one of them, each one of the uh, permits says the applicant's dividing the property to three separate lots, being numbered. Eleven, twelve and thirteen pursuant to an approval not required plan endorsed by the Wakefield Planning Board as shown on the final site plan. Um, um, but I would submit that it's not tied uh, to that. Exact plan, uh, that this plan meets all the criteria of the statute, uh, and. Is sufficient uh, to obtain an, a, approval not required plan endorsement today under the statute.
Okay, I, I mean, at this point, it, it, even if it did. Uh, it would not change us endorsing this, it, it may turn into a legal problem down the road, but. For, I, I, I'm just asking out of, out of curiosity, because either way. I feel this plan at this point deserves an endorsement, so, um, but. I was just curious about that, so thank you.
Understood, thank you.
Any other members of the planning board have any comments or concerns or questions? Uh, seeing none, I, I am in agreement with Mister Lowry reviewing the plan and uh, agree. That it, I don't have any further questions or comments. So with that being said, do I hear any motions from any other members of the planning board to endorse? The A and R as presented for three fourteen Salem Street. Um, prepared by Marishonda and Associates and dated nine twenty three twenty four.
Now, so moved on that endorsement.
Second.
Recommendation.
Well, second that. By Matt, seconded by Bill, so roll call vote, Theo Noel.
Yes.
Kevin York.
Yes.
Bill Spalding.
Yes.
Matt Lowry.
Yes.
And yes, to myself as well, so in that case, uh, the A and R is uh, endorsed by the planning board. And um. Sam will coordinate with you as it relates to uh, the signing of the Mylars.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, members of the board.
So, uh, Mister Brodigan, um, just let, let uh, Sam and uh, see, please see myself letting me to us know when the Mylars are ready to be. Uh, signed and delivered.
Absolutely, we'll, we'll get on that this week, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Jim, uh, it just might be a, a, a good time to. Uh, previously, um, we had made sure that any plans that did come for A and Rs did meet all the requirements. So I just wanna make sure that, that Sam looks at the plans and makes sure that, make sure that they can. Um, be endorsed by the board, so we don't run into this situation again where we have plans that are. Substandard, for a while, we had quite a few plans that would be um, presented and. Most of the board would not see it because it wasn't brought up because they were substandard, so, um. I, I think either a plan should, any plan that's presented either should be rejected. Or endorsed. Um, I, I don't think we should get into the habit of uh, having applicants withdraw and reapply, so that's. Just from over the years of doing this, um, there's no reason that any applicant. Shouldn't be able to follow the rules and regulations and submit a, a plan that's uh. That complies.
Matt, just to add, um, aside from any, you know, not following the rules aside of it. Are there any of the downsides or reasons that we would ask the applicant to resubmit at a later date? Um, due to time restrictions or planning board meetings?
Um, well, the statute's clearly, clearly written that. You know, if a plan is presented at a meeting, we either need to endorse it or not.
Right.
We really don't have the discretion of asking for changes. Um, so, uh, we can ask to, to be withdrawn. If the applicant does not wanna withdraw it, then we just at that point reject it, which, you know, isn't the best thing either, so. Um. And it's supposed to be presented at a meeting, so if we don't have a meeting scheduled. There's, we don't have to have a meeting just to hear an A and R. So, it needs to fit into our schedule. So. Uh, I don't think we need, if, 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 and say an A and R popped up yesterday and we didn't have a chance to put it on.
Mm-hmm.
There's no reason if we weren't gonna have a meeting in two weeks for us to have one in order to get that on. It is presented at our meetings. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I was just thinking, it's, yeah, following the rules is super important. I was thinking of another reason why someone would want to resubmit after. Um, bringing it to Sam, and one of those would be the time. Is if we weren't planning to meet or if our agenda was full for some reason, which doesn't usually happen, um, that they would. Be able to resubmit at a later date, but I guess in that case too, and under Sam's guidance. They wouldn't actually be on the agenda until there's a place or time for it.
But even, even that they're on the agenda doesn't mean they've submitted it, they have to submit it at, at a meeting.
It's, so it. So, the, the clock starts ticking. When it's at our meeting, not when Sam, not when the planning department receives it, is that correct?
It needs to be on our agenda so we can at least have it, see it ahead of time.
Mm-hmm.
So, I suppose if we were meeting in person and someone walked up with a plan. I don't know how, how that would work.
Yeah, we, we haven't had that though since. We've been meeting in person, right?
Yeah, anyone who, who walks up with a me, with a plan, obviously, we haven't seen it, we'd need to investigate. Uh, we don't know every single street in town whether it has frontage, if it's constructed properly or anything like that, so. Um, we need some time to look at this.
Yep. Okay, that's, that's just clarification on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, anything else before I move to the next item on the agenda?
Um, yeah, just to follow up, um, a rejection of an A and R does not. Prevent them from coming back and proposing a new A and R, or is there, is there a, a timeout?
Well, it's a twenty one days after the plan has been submitted to the board is when it starts ticking, so if the plan becomes approved or failure. Um. I think the board must, well, we have to in, endorse the plan or not endorse it, I don't think there's um. An option for them to resubmit under, it's the same, that, I don't know, that.
But, but if we were, if we reject it, can they? Come back with a, a replacement? Or a, a future A and R for that same site?
Right, if it's rejected because it doesn't meet the requirements, yes.
Yeah.
If it's rejected for other reasons where, um, it, it doesn't meet the state requirements, not just our. Rules and regs, I, I, I think the plan would have to be revised.
Yeah, yeah, that's that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, so in that case, I'll move on to the next item, as mentioned at the top, I'm going to switch the order. So, uh, instead of going to item number four on the agenda, I'm going to switch to item number eight on the agenda, which is the MBTA. Uh, multifamily overlay district and setting a little public hearing. Uh, members of the board, I, I see the letter and the town council has referred a zoning bylaw to this board. As of uh, I believe you last night, uh, so. The purpose of this discussion is to set a pub, formal public meeting before town meeting. Um, we will not be taking public feedback or public comment at tonight's meeting, the purpose solely is to set. The agenda for, so we can have a public meeting where the uh, representation from the town or from the. Applicant to town meeting can present to the planning board, and the purpose of that meeting will solely be for the board to take. Feedback from the public and either to um, vote to recommend approval or recommend. Not to approve the overlay that has been presented, so with that being said. In reviewing of our agendas going forward, town meeting currently is scheduled for November sixteenth. And so we have a meeting on November twelfth, which uh. To me makes the most sense and gives us sufficient time to get the requisite notice out. Um, associated with the public meeting, so unless anyone else on the planning board disagrees, I'd like to set the town meet. A formal public hearing for the November twelfth meeting.
Um, one thing uh, to the chair that I'd like to uh, have you just think about is that. Um, if there turns out that there's a lot of public comment, you may need to have it continued, if you wait until that particular date. You would not have any ability um, to have proper notice and have it uh, continued. And allow the required public notice timeframe in order to have a second hearing. Um, just as, as something that you may wanna consider is uh, scheduling a, a special meeting, so um. In that last week of October.
I believe, so our, our, between now and town meeting, we have the meeting on November twelfth. And the meeting on October twenty second, I don't believe we have enough time based on the current schedule to get. A sufficient notice out for the November, or for the October twenty second, correct?
Correct, it needs fourteen days, so you could do that very next day or a subsequent day that week, um, instead of waiting until. Just before a town meeting, just again, some food for thought for everybody, um, in case there is a situation. Where there are a number of different people and you wanna make sure everyone has an opportunity to have their own comment, um. And it may have to be continued, uh, so anyway, just so of, something to, to think about, I have no issues. Working with Susan on making sure that the special meeting would be noticed and getting it set up for, for hybrid, um, potentially even, uh, if need be.
And the one other date that we would, between that for Tuesdays, at least, we're the cadence of the board. Uh, November fifth is the general election and we are not allowed to have a meeting on that day as well. So we would have to have a meeting either on, we can have the meeting on the twelfth. And then if we would like, we can schedule a separate special meeting on a alternate day of the week. But all been up to other members of the board, if you wanna provide feedback as early as to how you'd like to. To proceed.
Um. Jim, I, I would like to have two meetings, um, we've. And I'd like to hear Matt's opinion on this too, but I think we've been aligned when it, it's, it is important to have two meetings for this. Any type of bylaw review or any type of recommendation to town meeting. And not just only for the public, but for the board members to, in, in case there is something comes up and they can't. Um, attend one of them, but I, I really feel strongly that we need to have two. And I'd be open to like the last Tuesday in October as a special meeting with, for the planning board to allow time. Um, I believe with the fourteen days, um. I'm just looking at the dates. That, I don't know if that works for everybody, but that would be October twenty ninth. Not Halloween.
Is, is it possible for us just to move our meeting from the twenty second since, I mean, we haven't called the meeting yet. And have it on the twenty ninth? That way, that'll give Sam enough time of the two weeks to post it, I mean. Realistically, we couldn't have it on the twenty third because it would need to be in the paper tomorrow. So that's unrealistic, it needs two weeks. Before the meeting, so I think the twenty ninth would be uh, the soonest it could be done. And I don't know currently what we have scheduled for the twenty, well. We may need to have a meeting on the twenty second and the twenty ninth, that's probably a better way.
Currently, we don't have anything on the October twenty second meeting, so moving it, I don't think would be an issue.
Yeah, the, to, to the chair, that's, I was going to confirm, we don't at this point have anything, and I have not had anybody reach out to have anything added, um. And we can talk about one fifty four, one fifty eight, but that, they're requesting an extension um, in order to meet with. ZBAs, uh, some neighbors and Conservation Commission, so that likely won't come up until a November meeting itself.
Well then, I, I would recommend we go to the twenty ninth, that'll, that's three weeks from now, that's plenty of time for posting. And yeah, it gives us enough time to potentially have another meeting after that, which doesn't need to be advertised, we just need to, to. Say when the next meeting is gonna be, so we wouldn't have any time constraints at that point.
Theo or Kevin, it looks like both of you have unmuted.
Yeah, I, I like that approach, that works for me.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think that's a good suggestion, the twenty ninth makes sense, so, and.
Okay, uh, I, so in that case, uh, what we can do is we will move the regularly scheduled meeting on October twenty second. To the twenty ninth, um, Matt, I may need you to fill in for myself, I have a, I believe I have a prior. Uh, work commitment on the twenty ninth, but we can coordinate offline.
That's fine, uh, we just, we do need to set a date and a time, so we'll have to just come up with it.
So I would, I would propose that we, we set it for October twenty ninth at seven ten. Unless anyone has any objection.
Um, let, let's just go for uh. Let's go for seven oh five, just sometimes killing, a, as Theo knows, killing. Even a few minutes is, 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 is difficult, if we have stuff, that's one thing, but. It, it's hard to start something and now you're gonna end it, so let, let's just, and it's gonna be, um, I, I believe highly, uh. Highly viewed and, and a lot of participants, so let's, let's just make it for shortly, yeah, even just shortly after seven, so. Get this, get it rolling, okay.
Seven oh five, perfect.
And can I ask a question?
Sure.
And then in the minutes, do you want me to write, and if needed, continue Tuesday, November ten?
I would just say continue to November twelfth, uh, at seven oh five as well, cuz I, I can't imagine a scenario where we're not going to have it continued.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, in that case, any other questions before I, on item number eight, before I move back to the regular schedule? Seeing nothing, so I'll move on to item number four, the one fifty four and one fifty eight Salem Street subdivision. So, uh, we received a letter from Attorney McGrail. Earlier today, asking for a continuation, but I will turn it over to Attorney McGrail, so you can speak uh, directly to the matter.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair, I think my letter was pretty uh, self-explanatory, when, when we last met on this, it was contemplated that we would. Likely continue, you had mentioned this data as a placeholder, uh, we had uh, discussed that we had to file with the um, for this. Um, uh, project of the end use on lot three with the zoning board of appeals, and we also needed a filing with the Conservation Commission. And it was discussed, it would probably be appropriate to get before all three boards at the same time. Um, it kind of on a, on a parallel path. Um, so we are going to be filing uh, with the zoning board next Tuesday, as I stated in my letter. To be on their meeting on November fifteenth for our kickoff with them, and then once filed with the uh, zoning board. We'll file with the conservation just after that, so I think they'll be meeting, they usually meet quicker than the, than the zoning board, they have less statutory notice requirements. As far as timeframes, so that will allow us to at least have one meeting with the zoning board on this. Um, uh, prior to coming back to the planning board, and that's why I asked to continue it to November twenty sixth, and I thought that made sense, and it was. Really the spirit of a, a discussion. November twenty sixth, I thought that made sense, and it was really the spirit of our our discussion the last time that we met on this. And we also, uh we also reached out to uh two of the neighbors that participated. Um in the last meeting, we reached out to both of them today uh to let them know that we're requesting this, so that's probably why they're not here.
Well, thank you. Thank you for reaching out and being proactive with the butters who expressed interest. Uh any members of the planning board have any comments? Uh my intent is to open this up for a public comment, if any, and then close it if no one uh if no one elects to participate.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, that that would be my request. It is it is an advertised public hearing, so if someone is here that potentially can't make a meeting. Now, I think we should open it up and and see if anyone wants to speak. And then uh and then continue it, but I I think it would be unfair for someone right here wanted to speak uh and not be able to.
And Matt, before I open it to public comment, just for my own edification. Uh for to continue a a public meeting, we can just, we don't have to take like a vote to do so. We just can agree to do so and then just. Uh you know, essentially agree with the applicant and set the agenda for the eleven twenty-sixth date, correct?
Yeah, as long as as we announce when the next public hearing is um shouldn't be an issue, so. Uh and we don't need to say. I don't think we need to have a a. A time for that, we just a date that we can have that continue to.
Yep, okay. Any other comments or can uh questions from the members of the board? Okay, in that case, I will open up any member of the public interested in providing comment on the one fifty-four, one fifty-eight Salem Street. Subdivision, uh if you do want to uh. Uh participate, please raise your hand, turn your camera on, and before you start, state your name and your address. Okay, uh looks as if no one is raising their hands. So uh unless one last call before I move close item number four and proceed to item number five on the agenda.
Mr. Chair, just procedurally, um I would respectfully request a vote to continue it to that date. Uh with a roll call, I just think it's appropriate to do that.
Uh do any members, other members of the planning board object to voting to continue to the November twenty-six, twenty twenty-four meeting? So in that case, uh roll call vote, uh Theo no?
Yes.
Uh Bill Spalding?
Yes.
Matt Lowry?
Yes.
Kevin York?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So five to nothing, roll call vote to continue the one fifty-four, one fifty-eight Salem Street subdivision. Public meeting to the eleven twenty-six. Planning board meeting.
Thank you for doing that, Mr. Chair. Very much appreciated.
Thank you. So in that case, I will uh close item number four, proceed to item number five. Letter to the town administrator uh as it relates to the. Section three A, so uh Mr. York, uh I know that you have uh issued a draft. To the planning board for their review uh prior to this meeting. Um and no comments between the planning board members have been shared. Um so. If Kevin, if you have a copy of the the letter, please feel free to uh share, or I can do so if you do not.
Let me just pull it up here.
Sure. And then I I'll pivot to you and you can you can uh. Run this I action item on the agenda.
Can you give me uh sharing privileges?
Here, I will just uh. I thought you had it. Give me one second. There, I think you should have it now.
Yes. All right, can everybody see that?
Yes.
So thi- this is the original letter um that I sent, I believe it was Friday. Hopefully everyone's had a time to review it. Uh I do have two small edits um. That I noticed over the weekend and actually one of them last night, listening to the town council meeting. Um in this second bullet, the attorney fees, this is actually a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar base. And then above that, anything that exceeds the hours included in that two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Would be an additional nine hundred and fifty dollars an hour that uh I'd like to add to that bullet. And then the other addition. At the end is just giving a timeframe for town administrator Mayo to try to pull this. Hopefully, I I would say now that we have the. Public hearing on the twenty ninth to have it by either the twenty ninth or the follow-up on the sixteenth. And also ask him to present that at town meeting when this is voted upon. Uh since he and his team will be pulling those figures, I think it's more appropriate for that to come from him rather than us as a planning board. Does anyone have any comments, questions, edits to this?
Yeah, um we don't. We wouldn't want this to be presented. Uh to us before town meeting, I mean, like. Uh you know, Mayo or representative from. From town coming to the November twelfth meeting. Uh I mean, we'll, you know, that's it.
Right, there there is some phrasing in here that that mentions since we are making an endorsement to town meeting. Uh it would be helpful to know that, so I I assume we would be voting on. Endorsing or not endorsing this bylaw on November twelfth at that meeting. So it. It could be helpful to have that, or we could change that language where we don't necessarily need to have it in there. Um I do think it would be helpful to have this information start to get out. Um throughout town, where I I think the subcommittee could also benefit from having this. I know. Last night when they presented to town council, uh they mentioned aside from any public hearings we would be having as a planning board, they also want to be presenting this. Outside of that, just to get visibility to it. And expand the reach as much as possible. And they they um. What I saw last night. Did not have a specific slide that talked about the grants that uh could be affected. If we are not in compliance, but that was mentioned several times. So uh that is something that it it seems they do want to talk about, um so this could.
Sorry for the background noise. Um yeah, I just wanted to give you a heads up that there is actually a a whole kind of. List of grants that I had ended up putting together. Um I'm happy to to share that as part of the presentation. Um next time around, if you'd like.
Does that answer your question, Theo?
Um yeah, I think I think that that's sufficient for sure. Um yeah, um. No, and I appreciate um even the discussion yesterday was talking about how the this list continues to grow.
Yeah, and I think even if this was presented to us, i- it's more for. Other people's edification, I I think we're. Most of us are, or I think all of us are fully aware of the opportunities that could be lost if the town. Votes this down. But I I haven't, having this presented at a. Public hearing for the planning board, I don't think is necessary. I think it's more. Consumption. It needs to get out to the general public and also noted at town meeting.
Um that makes sense for sure. Um I'll say, Kevin, I um. I really uh like the letter. I like its, I like its phrasing and um I like the um. The direct reference as as you mentioned, the you know, discussions of the repercussions on a lower bond rating. The uh um. I mean, we've talked about the not just the the lost benefits. Of state funding, but um I even think yesterday, last night. Uh council members talked about the the lost opportunities that those grants enable Wakefield uh. To develop and pursue municipal priorities and. Do um, this is a bit of an open-ended question, but would we want a separate bullet that says, you know? The. The lost uh municipal or the the lost municipal improvements. Uh and or the additional local taxes that would be required to offset. Uh the lost current and future state funding. Cause right right now, the conversation's really been about. Lost state funding. And attorney's fees and you know, bond rating is the the big, the big dog. And you know, future taxes would be an ano- another repercussion. But not. Not necessary to over edit um as well.
Uh I I I honestly feel as if the the letter as written, I I'm exceptionally comfortable. Putting my name to it. Um I do agree with Mr. Lowry that. It probably makes sense to omit the the one sentence saying, we also feel it's responsible request. To, or sorry. To change it, so it's a a request for the presentation to town meeting, not to the planning board. Beyond that, I feel very comfortable with this letter and I feel as if, well, I. I think Kevin did, you did a good job, and I think it represents um a lot of the the major concerns related to that issue.
Matt, did you have something to add?
The the only thing. I'm more concerned about more than just the lost funding is that um and we haven't seen this yet, is that. A town that's out of compliance with. With required zoning. And I was hinted to last night that, you know, someone could come in and. And make a zone. Uh impose a zone on on the town to make sure it is compliant. That is my biggest fear right there, so. But I don't think it needs, this is just financial, so I think I'm fine with this. But it should not be lost that, you know, since we're a town would be out of compliance. What it would take. Or what steps would be needed to make that town compliant could be more painful than anything else.
Any other feedback from board members?
Thank you very much for for writing it.
Yeah, Kevin, I think you did a great job on this. Thank you.
Uh in that case, uh what I'd propose is a member of the board to make a motion to transmit this letter. To the. To the town council and uh we'll put it on letterhead and uh. Make the amendment as it relates to omitting the highlighted sentence.
Uh so moved.
Well, I'll also update this part, uh like I mentioned earlier.
So motion by Bill, did I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Matt, so uh motion is to uh. Issue the the letter as presented to town administrator Mayo uh with the edits uh as outlined. But below in highlighted, highlight by Kevin. Uh Theo no?
Yes.
Uh Bill Spalding?
Yes.
Kevin York?
Yes.
Matt Lowry?
Yes.
Okay, so in that case, oh.
Sorry, question on this. I know we just voted, but. Who, should the town council be CC'd on this or not?
I would argue yes.
Okay.
Unless others feel differently.
I don't see any harm.
That's good.
Okay, so in that case, uh Kevin, if you want to make those edits and flip them to me, I will, I will coordinate getting that sent over to. Town administrator Mayo CCing the members of the town council.
And it will be in the item tomorrow?
I I I was actually gonna ask full transparency after we share it with those parties. Should we share it with the item?
Just. Jim, if I could butt in, it's once it goes to. It, I mean, this is a public meeting, the. Yeah, this, I I don't think we have to do that. If we want to do that as a board, I think that's fine and we can discuss it. But I think once it goes to town council and to town administrator. I I think it will end up in the item in some type of form. Uh Kevin, just sorry, are you thinking about being proactive with it? To the item?
Two thoughts that cross my mind. One was proactivity so that people can start to see. The financial. Um issues being raised. Uh the second one being. To get it out there that the request was made.
Yeah.
I don't know that I feel strongly one way or the other, but thought I would. See what all of you think.
I think it's a good idea. I was half kidding bringing it up, but I was thinking about the proactive side of it being possible, like from the planning board. Written to the item. Yeah.
I I don't have an objection one way or the other.
My my only hesitancy is that based on. Last night's uh vote by the the town council to refer. Uh to us, um they did talk a lot about making of. Uh a full court. Uh press to communicate all of the pros and cons um and uh. In consequences of of not passing a district, so not um so I'm not. I would, it it might not be uh cooperative to get ahead of them.
And in myself, this is. Addressed to the town administrator, I would I would send to them and. Like you said, it will, it will be repeated in the item in in some form. I don't think we need to. Worry about that too much, but again, I'm not. No strong feelings either way, but. Uh it may be duplication of efforts and. Um start to get fatigue on. On this issue that I think a lot of people are gonna be getting information over the next. Few weeks anyways.
Okay. Okay, so in that case, to summarize, we will send this to town administrator Mayo. We'll CC. The town council and we will not send anything to the item on the basis of not getting. Uh overly ahead of the other communication strategies that the town council is employing regarding this matter. Uh anything else regarding item number five before we move on? Okay, in that case, I will pivot to uh Theo to provide an update related related to the rules and regulations.
Uh thank you, um and thanks to the the board for your your patience. Uh I think we're we're pretty, we're pretty close with uh a near final document. I fortunately was able to talk with Sam and Bill Renaud. Uh earlier today, and it seems that a lot of. My my, you know, I I had a list of like eight items, eight eight very small items. Um many of those uh I think can be regarded as superfluous, so I I think we're very close to being done. Um I want to take one more pass at editing, at just double checking the formatting. The I would um and then um circulate that both to the board, but also. Well, actually. Yeah, I I would say circulated both to the board, but also to Sam and and. Uh and Bill. There were two sort of, uh so with the, sorry, with the goal of. Um Sam and Bill being able to devote some time after town meeting. Um, Sam and Bill being able to devote some time after town meeting uh to. To do, put the final edits, the final polish on and bring it back to us. So presumably by the by the. The first meeting in in December and for our for our final review and and acceptance. Um. The. Um, uh. Yeah, there sort of the only uh real ads were, do we need um? Uh, a context plan that shows, can we build the lots without waivers is is sort of my. My poor reference. Um, and thi- this is something that's. That I think we ha- has come up. Um Clyde Court would be one example. Um. Is that right? Yeah, um. But also the 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 larger. Um. Uh, what's the what's the the subdivision that we've been to that we were talking about behind Dunkin' Donuts near? Um, near Linfield and forgetting that one. Um. Want wanting to see that the. The lots could be could be created without without requiring waivers. So I think that's something that uh. Bill might uh put some put some uh legs to. Um. And. That's really it. He did also note he wanted to update our references to the stormwater by law because that's that's in flux. And. Um. Yeah. Um. I don't know any, so um. Uh, I'll be able to send that out to everyone this week. Um. Maybe potentially have uh. Come back um our last meeting of November and certainly uh December eighth or. So fine, maybe final review and and uh acceptance.
So I'll put you down for, oh, go for it, Matt.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, you know, once, once we. Have this, what we think is our final form, we should have a public. Meeting.
Okay.
To. You know, hear comments from from people. Before we approve it, we shouldn't just, because we did that within our. Regulations, we put them together. We publicize them for a while. We let people comment on it. Um. And then after that, we just need to officially. Approve them and then or adopt it, so. It doesn't need town meeting vote or anything like these. These are our our regulations, so. I think that would be appropriate. And I I don't know if it's required, but. In. Just for sake of transparency, we should let people comment on them if if they choose to.
Theo, what I would propose we do is the eleven twenty six up at a hold on our calendar and.
Yeah.
We can review if you have an update as it relates to finalizing them. If not, we can bump it to the next meeting in December. Uh, and then whenever we we circle up and we agree that they are ready. Uh, I agree with Matt, what we post them on our website and then wait some amount of time. And then hold a public hearing uh after the public has a sufficient chance to review. I'm assuming we still have a a. Redline copy that has track changes of all of the. The proposed revisions.
Yeah, yeah, and I I can um. I mean, so some stuff has been accepted over the uh. Over the iteration, so I I I can I can make some annotations just just for safekeeping. Um. And so, so that's that's fine. Yeah, all right. So that that would that would sort of anticipate um a public hearing in January.
That would be, that would be my intent.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think having a public hearing during the December month for something like this is necessary or. Or uh as transparent as we would want it to be.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you. A little little more.
Any more uh anything else on item number six before I move on?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. So in that case, I'll proceed to item number seven, the uh Affordable Homes Act and slash accessory dwelling units by law. So as a reminder, this is a law that was passed by the state requiring that. Accessory dwelling units are allowed as a right by municipalities. Um, that per our update last time uh from Sam, the the way the law is written is that there is a. Deadline in February where if we do not take action, then it will they will be uh allowed by right. By statute at the state level and then we will lose our local control around that bylaw. At the last meeting we discussed, we we. Thought despite that, it was not prudent based on the fact that we did not have sufficient time to collate. A considered proposal to attempt to try to get something on the fall town meeting. And that we will proceed on the basis of trying to get a bylaw collated for the spring town meeting. Um. So Bill, did you happen to to? Familiarize yourself with the discussion from the last meeting since you were not in attendance?
Yes, yes, I did.
Did you have any specific comments or concerns regarding the flow of conversations and the 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 next steps that we had defined at that time?
No, no, seemed logical.
Okay. So in that case, I think at the time we talked about uh if if this was going to be overlap with. The bylaw review committee, Kevin, do you have any update as it relates to? What town meeting the bylaw review committee is looking to to try to go towards?
No, we have uh still not had a meeting since the summer break. October twenty first is our first. One since June, I believe, so at that point we should have clear vision of what we're aiming for.
Okay. And I think we talked about potentially having someone from the planning board pick the ADU meeting or the ADU uh up as start collating things. But I don't think at this point we perceive that there was a time crunch, but I'll open up to them, the members of the board. If anyone has a strong feeling of how we would like to proceed or if we like to start this process or. Maybe wait till after this town meeting uh has passed.
Well, I I I think a lot of this is going to depend on on Sam's capacity right now, so. Um, I. I'm just guessing that she's probably not gonna have a lot of extra time, so. Um, we may wanna. Pick this up shortly after town fall town meeting.
Yeah, well, I think that um uh through the chair, I I do believe that there is um nothing wrong with. Choosing which member of the planning board wants to um, you know, put their boots on and and work on this with me. Um. Most of the work. The the bulk of the work for MBTA communities is done. Now I'm just kind of going around and presenting and answering lots of questions. I had a forty five minute call with somebody, the uh a member of the public the other day explaining pieces of it. Um, I have a meeting coming up with Conservation Commission, so aside from that stuff, there's um. There's not as much work. Uh, one of the other projects that I was working on with the uh Affordable Housing Trust, their rental assistance program is now launched. We just have a couple. I think we have a press release. Left to do on that, um and the website is almost updated with it. So the some of the big stuff that uh I had that was going on has um kind of it's it's winding down, so I think that. It probably would behoove you to choose which member of the planning board wants to to kind of step up and then um. I probably would not be meeting. Or planning on meeting and discussing any component of this until the beginning of November or just after town meeting. Um, so you don't necessarily have to choose someone tonight, but I I don't think that there's any reason why you couldn't. Um, I do have a meeting scheduled. With department heads. To try to get an idea of what their largest concerns are with eighty uh ADUs uh as you know, at well, how we how to deal with addressing. Or um setback components or fire safety. Uh, you know, there's lots of lots of big questions that I, you know, we kind of need to think about. Um, so I want to try to gather those questions before, you know, there's really any traction on any sort of bylaw. Um, so that's coming up. In the middle of October, I think next in about a week. Um, so I should have some more. Kind of a good foundation to go from there. Um, and then I'm happy to again start working with somebody um if somebody would like to.
Are any other members of the planning board interested in picking this up and uh starting to craft a plan with Sam on how to proceed?
Yes, I'm interested if. If nobody else wants to not, that's not the right way to say it. I'm I'm interested in this, but I don't want to take it on if somebody else has their heart set on it.
Well. I was gonna say that I could work on it, but. There is a a big caveat there that if I were to work on it, I. Might not be presenting it at town meeting. Um, just for the fact that I.
Mm hmm.
Most likely not going to be a planning board member at that point, so. Um, I'm happy to help with it, but. I'm not gonna be the one. Uh, running it over the goal line or or fumbling just before that as it may be, so. Um. So Bill, yeah, maybe. It might be best for you. You're still you'll still be here, so that'll be good.
Hopefully.
Okay, um Kevin or Theo, do you have either you have an objection with Bill picking this 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 one up?
No objections from me.
None none whatsoever.
Okay. So in that case. What's up, Bill?
No, I said I'm I I have one laid out from my backyard right now. No, it's it is interesting because after looking at the meeting notes, thank you, Susan, and um catching up on. Stuff I just looking in like our yard and our neighbor's yard over here on the west side along Molton Playground. It's actually something that works inside the setbacks. It's it's an interesting way to um. Yeah, I I like this, so I think I have. Some good background to help support it and figure out. How other towns are doing it as well, so. Yeah. I'm excited.
Okay, sounds good. In that case, uh. Uh, what I propose is you, if you want to reach out to Sam and connect in terms of next steps and then just let me know the next time that you would like to. Present to or have an update or be added to the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, uh, anything else in terms of of the item number seven, the Affordable Homes Act slash accessory dwelling unit by law? Okay, in that case, I will uh I'll move on to the next item. So the next item on the agenda, since we took item number eight earlier in the meeting. Will be item number nine, items not anticipated by the chair. So any items that are not anticipated by the chair uh from any other members of the planning board or Sam?
Bill, a comment, I just, um, Sam, I appreciate the evolution of your presentation for. Um. Three A, so it's, I think it's it's um. I I really feel positive and I know there's a lot of naysayers in the town and um. And the direction this is going in. Um, I I just really appreciate the effort that you've put into this and and the subcommittee. There there's been a lot of. Back and forth and it's, I'm really impressed with how. This is written and the information in there. And I got a chance to review it because I know I've seen pieces of it and heard pieces of it, but. I I got a chance to review it before our meeting tonight and it has a lot of undertones of when we did the multi um, the mixed use. Mixed use overlay back in twenty fourteen, I think, so it has a lot of that in it and um. I I did notice one thing in it that I was a little curious about and not that you have to answer it tonight. I noticed that the affordable. Percentage was at um ten percent and not at the eighteen percent that we would like to see as a planning board, so.
I can answer that really quick. It's very simple. Um, because of the shorter timeline, uh, the. There wasn't a, in order for us to do anything above ten percent, because that's the minimum or the maximum that the state gives kind of. Uh is basic by right, you have to have an economic feasibility analysis done to prove that it works. Even if you already have inclusionary zoning, even if you've already shown that it works in your town, they just want to make sure that it pencils out, but it's a realistic uh expectation or requirement. Um. Because. The. It's just how how the EO HLC has has water tanks, so we just didn't have the time um and the cost. The the cost and the time trying to get all that together. Um, it just didn't work out for this time. So rather than including nothing, we're including ten percent at this point, or the the subcommittee is proposing ten percent at this point. So that it's at least a neutral development, so it's not going to put us further in the hole for for SHI units. Um, and then we can always go back at a later date in time. And either put in a forty hour district, which allows you to go up twenty five percent um or amend it to increase with an EFA.
Okay, thanks.
And that's again, economic feasibility analysis.
Right, yeah, okay, thanks.
Anything else from, before we move on from um anything else from other members of the planning board regarding the proposed. MBTA communities. Zoning. Um, if no one else says anything, then uh then I will take a moment and just say thank you, Sam, for uh for doing. Uh Yeoman's work. I know it's relatively thankless, so I think everyone here can appreciate. The uh the amount of effort that goes into collating one of these and how little people uh acknowledge it, so thank you, thank you, thank you. Especially given where we thought we were at the last meeting to now have a zoning warrant that's going on. Um, so I know I'm sure that took a lot of. Work with the subcommittee to get to that point, so and I would also echo what Bill said, you know, I think. The subcommittee's work should not go unnoticed in their ability to get this to something that is presentable to the town meeting. Uh, and to give the citizens a choice in terms of if how they want to address this issue.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, so with that being said, uh, anyone else have any other items anticipated by the chair? Uh, seeing nothing, in that case, uh, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Uh, motion by Bill, anyone to second?
One second.
Motion by Bill, uh seconded by Theo, uh Matt Lowery?
Yes.
Kevin York?
Yes.
Theo Noel?
Yes.
Bill Spalding?
Yes.
Thank you everyone for this meeting and I look forward to uh seeing you guys at our next meeting on October twenty uh twenty ninth.
Mm hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.